Well, I'm not sure I've even got to call this meeting to order. It's already at order.[244.12][244.12](laughing) But, welcome to the November 2nd County Commissioners Meeting. We're glad that you're here. And with that, I'm going to call on Commissioner Charles Evans to give our invocation and do the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you please stand in back of your heads, please? Dear Lord, I have to file, but first of all, let me say thank you. Thank you for all the things that you have done for us, the things that you are going to do for us. Please bless each and every member of this board. Let us know and remind us that our business is the people's business, and that we're here to take care of the citizens of this great county. Bless the citizens, Lord, and let them know that we are forever indebted to them, and that's why we are here to serve, Lord. And continue to bless and guide us in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Johnson, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to call on Commissioner Jeanette Council for some recognitions.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, you know that we have an award-winning county government, and we're always having our people being recognized by the state. We can't give you any more money, but we can thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do, and for serving as a beacon for other organizations throughout this state. So, may I have first, the Social Services Department and the award winners from the Social Services Department? This is the sixth year, I think, that the Social Services Department has won awards at the annual conference. This one was just held in Hickory about two weeks ago, I think. So, it's fresh. You all don't even realize it yet, do you?[413.71][413.71](laughing) Hey, Heather. The department won the Best Practice Award for Advancement in Staff Leadership and Development for its annual job swap, which is the, is the grass greener on the other side. The North Carolina Association of Directors of Social Services presented the award. This event allows DSS staff to vote management into their positions, and to vote themselves or their coworkers into management or other positions throughout the agency for 25 cents per vote. This year, the DSS staff cast 2,880 votes, which raised $720. All proceeds will go toward the agency's senior health fair and the March to Work Job Fair. And then a post-event luncheon was held so that the participants could share their experiences. And I don't know who would not want to vote their boss, or their department chair, or somebody into swapping their jobs. So, this is truly an innovative practice. Don't try to do it with me. I'm not going to give you that.[493.12][493.12](laughing) And the award reads, "NCACDSS Best Practice Award, Advancement in Staff and Leadership Development, Tier 1 and 2, Presented to Cumberland County DSS Job Swap. Is the Grass Always Greener, October 22, 2015." Congratulations.[517.12][517.12](applause) Oh, wait a minute. Come on, Seth. Come on, come on, come on. We're pausing for this. We are. Come on. We all together. Thank you. Would you please go around?
Yes.
Come on, ladies. Let's go around. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did y'all leave anybody out? I know I did this kind of off. I was so overwhelmed with all of the awards that I only told you about one of them. There were actually four awards, and the other three, Brenda, come back up here, please.[597.12][597.12](laughing) The other three awards were Best Practice in Membership Retention, Innovative Fundraising, and Chapter of the Year. The awards recognize the Cumberland County NCSSA for its efforts to help DSS employees have fun, relieve stress, and strengthen morale. The activities included assistance with food drives, staff appreciation initiatives, support of foster care events, care family violence, domestic violence center donations, sponsorship of county government week activities, and continued sponsorship of the Cumberland County NCSSA scholarship. The NCSSA Sponsors and Awards Program aimed at the recognition of chapters and counties excelling in leadership and, and development. All right? Best Practices awarded to Cumberland County Social Services Association recognizes Cumberland County for best practices in innovative fundraising. All right, who do I present this to?[668.62][668.62](applause) President and past president.
Past president.
Past president.
Current president.
And you are?
I'm the sponsor.[681.12][681.12](laughing)
Thank you. You can hold this.
Come around.
I'm sorry. And then, this award is for Best Practices in Membership Retention. Okay, you don't have anything.[703.12][703.12](laughing) And this one is North Carolina Social Services Association recognizes Cumberland County as the 2014-2015 Chapter of the Year for the third straight time.[725.12][725.12](applause) And where are the members? They have 168 total. Where are the members? I know the leader sets the tone, but members, come on up here. The leader sets the tone, so I'm going to grab your hand.
Okay, thank you.
But, members, come on over here. Now, stand like you're family, and, come on.
Now, be nice with him there.
Come on up here. Come on up here. Stand like you're family. Squeeze up. Leave a big hole for me. Now, I have one more. Bernstein. Our, we had our Health Director up here with an award. Yeah, you've been up here a couple of times with awards for the Health Department. Now, we have our Deputy Health Director. So, Rod, would you, Mr. Jenkins, would you come up, please? All right. Our deputy here, stand in the middle so I look like a sandwich, please. Thank you.[928.12][928.12](laughing) Okay.
I guess it's the men's term.[932.12][932.12](laughing)
And it says Deputy Health Director. Our news release says Deputy Health Director, named Bernstein Leadership Fellow. The Cumberland County Health Department has announced that Deputy Director Rod Jenkins has been selected as a Jim Bernstein Community Health Leadership Fellow for 2015-17. The fellows program is administered by the North Carolina Foundation for Advanced Health Programs. Its purpose is to develop and prepare future leaders to work in and improve the health of rural and underserved communities in North Carolina. Rod was notified of his selection in July, so he has already started attending the leadership training. The core elements of the program are leadership, partnership, rural life, and the North Carolina health system. At the conclusion of the fellowship, they are, members are expected to be better leaders. He's already a good leader, but he's expected to be an even better leader. So, we are extremely happy and proud to have Mr. Jenkins, who has been with us with Cumberland County since 2011, and before that with an adjoining county. And he also served, you're a military man, too.
Yes, ma'am.
You're a little bit of everything.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, and he's a military man also. So, we are very proud of him and his accomplishments, and what he is going to bring to the Health Department. The leader sets the tone, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
You got a word?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
This, this indeed is truly an honor, and I am beyond overwhelmed by the amount of support. Regardless of what type of fellowship you partake in, it's all about the support that you receive. So, I'd like to publicly admonish and salute my Health Director, who didn't think it robbery for me to be involved in this. As a matter of fact, he had to submit a letter of recommendation as well. But upon the recommendation of the President of the North Carolina Association of, North Carolina Public Health Association, I was nominated for this award. But, I will leave you with this. In Sunday service on yesterday, I heard the Leader Val Deacon say that it's all about service with a smile. So, I truly look forward to learning all that I can and coming back and serving with a smile. Thank you all so much.
Y'all did graduate from the Citadel, didn't you?
Rod.
I said, y'all did graduate from Citadel, didn't you?
I promise you did.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
While the Social Services Department is going back to work, I would like to just mention something that I had the opportunity of attending Friday, was the opening of our mailroom and the rearranging of some of our departments down at the maintenance office in, in Massey Hill. If the other Commissioners get an opportunity, please go by and see what's going on down there. It is quite impressive. The thing that impressed me the most was the smiles, as Rod mentioned, on the face of the people that work down there. And our manager, Amy Cannon, did a great job of some recognitions there. And it was just a pleasure, if, where I was standing, you could look down both halls, and you could see the smiles on those faces of those employees. And, of course, along with the happy employees, and hopefully they are happy, we do the best we can for them. You know, we wouldn't have all of this if we didn't have a good leader. And I hope you recognize that, that we do have a good leader, and if you could have seen her on Friday, you would recognize it much more than what I'm saying, that it's evident. And, and we thank you, Ms. Cannon, for what you do each and every day, and the staff, too, because nobody can do it alone. It's all of us working together to, to make this county better and to serve the citizens better.
Mr. Chairman, if I could take one moment, please. I do have a, one of our trustees from the library that's here, Ms. Sandra Veracloot, and just wanted to recognize her. And she's coming off that board. She's been the chair, but she's here this morning. Just like to recognize her.
Good. And we're going to get her on something else, Mr. Adams.
Thank you. She's done a tremendous job on the library.
With that, I would ask County Manager if there's any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
No adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
An motion, a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Consent agenda, is there item B pulled, Mr. Adams?
Y'all, y'all, I'm thinking I'm in court this morning. Mr. Chairman, if we could pull two, two H?
Two H?
Yes, two H, yes. And two J, and two J.
And two J?
Yes, I got two of them this morning.
Mr. Chairman, also, two G, I just have a question on.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything to pull? All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands?
Second.
All right. There's been a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Mr. Keith, is that your old light?
Oh, yes, sir. I apologize.
Let's see, get it off here. There you go. All right, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll take them in, in order of the alphabet. G, Mr. Keith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question on this sale. First of all, there was a proposed advertisement attached, but I didn't see it in the packet. But I was more concerned about how we arrived at a figure based on tax value. And it is a concern of mine that sometimes, I know we want to get it back on the tax book, but sometimes we undervalue property that we may have. So, my question is, if we could get a copy of the advertisement, and just some particulars about the timeline on when this happens, and how we arrived at that number of $4,874.05 on a $15,000 piece of property. So, I'd like to turn that over to the county attorney. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, is that for future action, Mr.?
I was, I was just wondering how we, how we arrived at that number.
First, the advertisement, Mr. Keith, the advertisement is at the very bottom of the page where it says advertisement proposal.
Oh, oh, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I thought it was more intense than that.
No, that, that's follows the statute that we have to do this with. The, we get the tax value from the tax records, and the purchase price of, that the county pays for the property is, was the taxes that were due, and the costs associated with the foreclosure back when this was done in 2011. In other words, that was what the county's bid was on this property to, to, at the foreclosure sale in 2011. There were no other bids. Typically, when the county acquires a property, there are no other bids. And the Board's practice in the past, we brought all these forward. If, if the, the minimum offer that my office accepts pursuant to instructions that we have always received is to, is no less than the amount of the cost the county has in it for the, for the taxes and the cost of the foreclosure, and then I always provide the Board the, the tax value of the property as a comparison.
We don't take into account any interest or anything else that goes with that. Just the actual value. If it was 15 years ago, it's still the same.
Yeah, yes, sir. We don't, we don't.
All right.
And as far as the process, if the Board accepts this offer, this advertisement will be sent over to the newspaper this afternoon, tomorrow, probably be run about Friday, and we would likely have it back for, if, if there are no upset bids, it would come back at the November 9th, the second meeting in November.
All right. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, all right. Mr. Adams?
I just have one question. When we do that, the law, because I'm just getting here, the law, was taxes and everything, does that include whatever the attorney had to do to do all of that? So, it's all the costs?
It's, it's the cost of the foreclosure and the cost of the taxes that were foreclosed at that time.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item two G.
Second.
Mr. Second, the motion, any discussion further? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item H, Mr. Adams?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, and I'm going to do H, and I'll do J, too, because normally we do proclamations, we do on the consent agenda. But I believe that these two items and were of such significant importance to this community that we at least need to be able to address it. And the first one is the proclamation to declare functional end to veteran homelessness. And we have some individuals here from Family Endeavors, Ms. Larissa Witt, and Ms. Mary John Williams, and staff members. Mr. Chairman, and it's, I guess it's fitting for two reasons. One, one of your goals was, and one of the agenda items and things that we talked about on this board was to end homelessness. This is just a part of that, and I think it shows the commitment that you made, and you had us make, to this community toward homelessness. The second thing, I think, is fitting that on today, the Veterans Center out on Rafer Road is opening up today, and I think this is just a grand day to be able to talk about bringing it down to functional zero veteran homelessness in this community. I think the administration, the Obama administration, along with the First Lady, along with the federal government, along with us, as the county and the city, decided that our veterans, we were going to take care of them. They've taken care of us all over all these years, and that to have them homelessness on the street was something that we, as a Board, would not allow to happen. And so, with the collaboration with Family Endeavors, the continuum of care, and the community, Cumberland County community development, it is all about cooperation and collaboration. And I think that's what got us to this point in terms of entering, ending veterans homelessness. So, I would ask them to stand, and I'm not going to read the proclamation, because the proclamation was done, but for us to be able to present that proclamation to them for their outstanding work. They went under every bridge, every nook and cranny in this community to be able to do that. And I just thought that we should take a moment just to know that that has happened in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and thank you for attending the ceremony, and I think they deserve a great big hand for what they've done. We thank you, and keep up the good work. We'll do what we can to support you. And item J, which is, is the next item that Mr. Adams pulled, and we'll sort of go a long way, too, in helping some of our veterans. So, thank you so much for what you do. Okay? Do we need a motion now to approve the proclamation, Mr. Adams?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Adams, item J.
And again, Mr. Chairman, thank you all, and thank the Board for allowing me to take this. This is about the Cumberland County Veterans Treatment Court, and to all of my members here, because I was not on this board. You all voted to do this. You all voted to stand strong with our veterans in this community. And I think that's a testament to what our county manager, our county staff, and what you all set forth a year ago. November 13, 2014, is when the Cumberland County Veterans Treatment Court opened. It's been a year. It's the second veterans' court in the state of North Carolina, and one of the things, again, to know that this community and that this Board supports the treatment of our veterans. And I thought, again, that this should be one that should not be buried in the consent item, that... And I thought, again, that this should be one that should not be buried in the consent item that, because of what this board has done and what we've stood behind, that this was one that needed to be done. The actually Veterans Day court, they're going to celebrate it November 13th, 2015, in courtroom, I think, 2B.